This opportunity to we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. We give all the glory and power to you. Please be with us, help us have wisdom in all that we do. We ask in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. Now, now call this meeting in Port St. Joe City Commission. We start out with two consent agendas, a regular meeting and then a special meeting. Does everybody have time to look over that? Motion to approve if you have.
It's open.
That a motion? Have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries forward. Port St. Joe Re-Dev, are they here today?
I can give a brief update, Mayor.
Go ahead.
We just discussed the transition plan from the sunsetting. We are working on finishing up some projects and compiling a list of projects that we would intend to finish before the sunset date. And that's where we're at today.
Thank you, sir. Building Department update. I want to thank you for sending me that email.
You're welcome.
If anything's changed, would you send me another one?
Absolutely, as it was this morning, too. Since October, we've had 50 demolition permits, 267 residential reroutes, 44 commercial reroutes, 202 residential remodels, 13 commercial remodels, 37 temporary power poles, 81 electric service repairs, 13 accessory structures, five single-family structures, 26 temporary structures, and 17 ICC letters.
Any questions, anybody? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Charlie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. First up is ordinance 554, CIP plan update. I'm gonna let Mr. Anderson don't mind addressing the specifics of that.
Mayor, Commissioner, this is something we do on our annual basis. With the storm applying for so many different grants, excuse me, we did feel it was appropriate to go ahead and make the updates for you. This is actually just a comprehensive list of wish lists for the city on different projects that we feel we possibly could be doing over the next course, the next five years on there. So, for you to look at today to see if you have any suggestions, any comments on there. That way we can get it in place because a lot of times when you're applying for grants through the state, they want to see it on your comprehensive or your own CIP plan.
Mayor, I have one concern. On pages 10 and 11, it refers to the project funding sources, PSJRA/ grant opportunities. PSJRA can't expend any funds on anything that's been in a CIP plan for the prior three years. Could you get with BSJRA staff and ask if those are in the plans for the next year before we sunset? If so, we need to pull them off this.
Okay. Since we're going to be going back to look at those things on there, it may be appropriate to table it till the next meeting. That way we can go back and give you time, too, to take a look at it. So, if you will, go back and look at it, see if you see any other additional comments, changes, because there is a lot of information in here. And what we can do is more wish we just bring it back to you for the first reading, the next reading if you'd like.
I'm fine with moving forward with the first reading, and then you can bring back the changes. I don't have any problem with that.
If that's legal to do, absolutely.
Yeah.
Is that your motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
You have a motion on the floor? We have a second?
Second.
Second on the floor. Any further discussion?
I have one other item, Mayor, if I could. On the replace City Hall complex due to damage from Hurricane Michael, it's slated for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Do we want to keep it that way, or do we want to try to move that up? And Jim, does that affect getting a grant next year? Or, I'm sorry, if we went after a grant this year, would that be okay to have it slated for next year?
Generally, the rule of thumb is if you have it in the first two years, they want to have dedicated funding for it. So, it's like I say, it's just a place marker on there. You could always slide it up if you wanted to, but normally, DEO wants to see if that you have dedicated funds for your.
Okay.
No opposition to the motion? Motion carries forward.
Reading ordinance number 554, an ordinance of the City of Port St. Joe, Florida, meaning the capital improvements element of the comprehensive plan, meaning the five-year capital improvement plan, adopting the updated school district five-year work plan, providing for repeal of all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict, herewith providing for severability and providing an effective date. Next, under my heading is boat dockage agreement update. Mr. Anderson and I both spoke to counsel for St. Joe Company, Lisa Walters, yesterday at a conference call. We were working through the details on that. One of the ultimate trump cards that the St. Joe Company is holding is that they own the submerged lands underneath there, underneath the water in the marina. But I believe ultimately that Mr. Anderson spoke to George Gonzalez this week as well, and Mr. Gonzalez indicated that he would work with us as expeditiously as possible. Mr. Anderson, do you want to comment on that any further?
Absolutely. Did have a good conversation with Mr. Gonzalez this morning. Said he was amenable to working directly with us to try to accommodate a few boats at that location. I indicated, yes, there is a lot of construction that's going to be going on, so we would need to work around that. But what he suggested was if I would give him over, if I would email him some information today, is exactly what we're asking for on there, he said he would direct himself, answer back in the next day or two promptly, and do anything he could to work with us. So, that's what our plan is after speaking with him this morning. If you have any other suggestion or anything, you actually would like to be inclusive in the, in the letter back to Mr. Gonzalez, but we plan to try to work with him. So, at this point, we would like to ask that we have at least a week or two of work with Mr. Gonzalez to see if we can make this thing happen.
I know you brought up Mr. Tankersley's name last week, or last meeting. I got a call from him as well, that he is interested in a spot there.
He's included in our discussion.
Okay.
Yes, I think the.
I also spoke with Captain Dennis, that was C-Tow, who was right next door to the city bulkhead, and he has shown interest in possibly leasing space from the city for the C-Tow. Looks like we're at four right now. Someone needs to contact the captain little.
Yes, sir. I'm planning to call him.
Because I believe he was planning on coming like today or tomorrow.
Yes, sir. I talked to him at the end of last week, so yes, sir, I do need to call him as soon as we leave here today. I want to discuss with the board first, but I would like to call him today, let him know to please give us a week or two to work through the details on here because we're getting close. Mr. Gonzalez called, and he said he would work with us, but yes, we do need a little more time.
Well, I was glad to hear that we actually had opportunity to speak with Gonzalez on this issue because I think it's critical that the city is working with the marina and the St. Joe Corporation. I know that they have future plans, big plans for the marina, so we need to be working together. They need to be helping us on bulkhead, and we can hopefully work with them in making a much nicer place down there.
We'll get some out from Mr. Gonzalez to see if we can get everything repelled.
Next is the election qualifying fee ordinance, and I'll call it the election ordinance, the overhaul, and update, and adoption. About halfway through it. I've gotten pulled off on some other issues that came about that were more pressing, but I'm working my way through it. It wouldn't be applicable for this year anyways, but it certainly does need updating because we go back quite a long ways with the current ordinance, and some of the laws and procedures have changed, but that should be done here shortly. Next is not under the agenda of items, but as far as it pertains to trash pickup, Mr. Anderson and I spoke to BCC this morning, working through the contract. One of the issues is the current state of the transfer station. I would ask, it is dilapidated to say the least, so I would ask that the board allow Mr. Anderson and I to draft a letter to Waste Pro requesting that they comply with their contractual requirements, which ultimately places a responsibility of maintenance on Waste Pro because of the dilapidated nature of the property and buildings on it. Would the board be so inclined to allow Mr. Anderson and I to do that?
Do you need a motion?
Yes, sir.
So, move.
We have a motion. Commissioner Ashbrook, have a second?
I'll say.
Commissioner Walter. Any further discussion? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries forward.
Mr. Anderson, do you have any other comments that came from our work on this issue?
No, we're trying to work through it. All indications are that Mr. Tenell would like to use the transfer station, but it is in need of some repairs, it's in pretty bad shape. So, we're working through those. We had a good conversation with him this morning, trying to make the transition as smooth as possible.
Was any of it hurricane damage?
Mayor, there probably was a little bit of it. Mr. LaCorre was in on the meeting, so was Mr. Bradley this morning, and what we want to do, too, is go back and look at what our insurance was. They may or may not be able to help us out with the insurance. So, yes, sir, there could have been some damages that was indicated.
Don't we get a lease payment for that currently with Waste Pro?
That is correct.
And we'll get the same payment with the new company?
We've got to work out those details, but yeah, the current amount right now is $2,000.
That's what I was saying.
So, we've got to, we've got to work out all those details, because like I said, he wants to use it, but it's just in bad shape.
All right.
Mayor, that's all I have today.
All right, Jim, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, sir. First item we have is the golf cart ordinance. We had actually had a committee in the fall that went through the golf cart ordinance, gave you some recommendations. I think we had it before the board one time to start the process, and then Hurricane Michael did. So, Mayor Patterson wanted to bring it back for you today to take a look at.
Yeah, I have had several people ask me where we were at with this ordinance, and I said, well, we tabled it there right before the hurricane, and we do need to bring it back up. We need, I think, if the ordinance is complete, I think there's questions about insurance. It's not the only thing that's holding most things up now.
Mr. Mayor, the ordinance, as far as, unless I have some direction from the board, the ordinance is complete. The question is, the committee, the board has to adopt it or suggest changes, but the committee, in a very contentious vote on insurance, that was really the biggest issue. And I've prepared two versions, one with, one without. Ultimately, I believe the committee voted against having insurance, but it was a very contentious, and respectfully contentious issue. But the ordinance, absent any further comment, changes, recommendations from the board, is ready to proceed forward.
Did you say that the committee voted against the insurance because it's in the final document?
There's two versions, one with and one without.
Oh, okay. But the only one we have is with insurance.
Correct, I think so. And the one in the package today is with insurance. But there's two versions that were submitted, one with, one without. I did that just to streamline the process.
But the committee actually voted to not require that.
Correct, and I think it was a 5-4 vote or something of that long ago.
Well, and just so the record will reflect this, I still will argue that you can't get the insurance. There's no company that will insure a golf cart once that golf cart is used as a motor vehicle on public roads. And if you'll remember, we actually asked the question to our insurance person of the city, and he agreed. And I've dealt with that, and I still believe that there is no such insurance. So, to me, if we approve requiring it, we're going to find out quickly that the people that are being told you have to have it, you can't get it. You know, you can insure a golf cart on your private property, or if you had a farm, you can drive it all over that farmland, or if it's stolen, but the minute you turn it into a motor vehicle and put it on the road, they're not going to insure it. So, that was my only feeling, but I'm fine with going with the recommendation of the committee. I think they did a lot of work, and they should come out with a good product. And now hearing that they actually voted to not require the insurance, I'm fine with what we've recommended or what they've recommended to us.
And if the board is happy, what I would suggest is that we'll bring this back for first reading at the next meeting, without the insurance option taken out, which is easy. I've already got that prepared, or I can just delete it, and we'll bring it back for the next meeting for the first reading. It's an ordinance that will require two readings and advertising.
With the understanding that if someone can show that the insurance is available for, and, because I know there were some people on the committee that were pretty adamant in support of the insurance, I'm okay with the insurance if we can buy it, and it's not a lot of money to purchase it, I'd be okay. I just have an issue with requiring someone to get something that you can't possibly purchase. If we have a member of the committee that can show us that they can get it, we need to have them come and speak to the board.
I agree. It's, we're not making a change. We currently don't require it, so let's just pass an ordinance, move forward, and if we want to add it later, we can. We reserve that right.
So, we're seeing like putting a motion into that effect?
We're going to take a long time.
Yeah, well, they don't have to be because it's not. It's that format.
The next item we have, Mayor, is just an update on where we're at with Hurricane Michael paperwork. FEMA disaster recovery centers, they did close last week, so they will no longer be here as far as a DRC location here in Gulf County. If you do need to contact them, their steward, the phone number is still available by phone to be, to help with questions there. We are coming to the close of actually filling out the paperwork of FEMA on the city of Port St. Joe as far as getting in our paperwork back to DEM, Department of Emergency Management, back through FEMA for funds to come back down to the city. Mike LaCorre has been working that side as far as going through each one of our, I think we have 27 sites that we went back through and indicated some type of damage. I'll let Mike tell you exactly how that process is going, where we're at.
Did they, did they, did we include the summaries of the data?
Is it this one?
Yes, that one, yeah, that's it. So, we had the first facility go through the FEMA costing process, where they actually put numbers to it and estimated a recovery amount. So, the Stackhouse, you can see, item A was the first insurance claim amount that the insurance estimated. And then we went back to the insurance after we got the bid for repair of $44,800, and insurance revised their calculations based on the bid for the repair. So, the insurance number went from 16 to 40. And then item C is the recoverable depreciation. That amount will get back after the repairs are made from the insurance. So, that's a positive number there. And then the last four numbers, you can see, is the FEMA calculation, their adjustment for insurance, the net, and then item D is what FEMA will reimburse us. So, you can see on the Stackhouse, through insurance and FEMA reimbursement, we've come out with a positive $18,000 on that. And so, that was just the first one that's gone through FEMA and insurance, and it has been repaired. So, I thought I'd show you the process and how we're tracking this to make sure that we're recovering both from insurance and FEMA and coming out on top with each individual claim.
So, that works fine as long as we don't have a discrepancy in what we're asking to be repaired. Like, let's talk about the Centennial building. If the Centennial building, if the adjuster said, well, we'll replace the roof, but we're not going to replace the wood floor, then how does that work?
Well, he said he would replace, the insurance will replace the roof and portions of the floor.
Okay.
So, insurance didn't cover the entire floor in the damage estimate.
Okay.
So, so then would be, if we feel that we need to go back on an item and ask the insurance to look at it again, we certainly can do that.
Well, I think we need to, and I'm not an insurance adjuster, obviously, but I do have a son-in-law that is one. And it's my understanding from listening to him that when you have a floor that is damaged by water, if the floor is covered, then the insurance is required to replace all of the flooring until there is a break in the flooring. In other words, they can't come in your house and say, we're only going to take care of this area by the fireplace, if you have the same type of flooring through the living room, down the hall, and maybe into another room. If it continues, then they are required to replace it. So, I would like to double check on that and find out why they're only wanting to do part of it. And you've heard me say, in the past, we need to look at these buildings as if they are our homes, and we need to hold them to the fire on replacing what's fair and just.
Absolutely. We can go back and review the Centennial building and that specific issue with the insurance company.
Yeah, because I think we're going to find out that that's a big, big cost item. I'd hate to know that, you know, two or three years go down the road, and then we have to pay for it. The same as the gym. If that gym floor needs to be replaced, then we need to be adamant that we're not going to settle for less. And I haven't had a time to look at the gym floor, but I know that when that water was pouring in there, it looked like the floor was having bubbling issues.
It did, and it's on my plate to contact our installer that originally installed them and see if we can get them back in here to take a look at what it would take to, that flooring is, you are able to remove it.
Right.
So, maybe we can just repair it, but we need to get our installer back in to look at that floor and make an assessment as to whether they think it can be repaired or needs to be replaced. But certainly, we're tracking all of our facilities through the same process in this spreadsheet, and I can produce those numbers for you for all the facilities. I just wanted to give you one example, one that has been repaired and gone through FEMA, and we've gotten all the estimates so that we can see where we are on the facilities. But we do have a lot of work still to do with insurance and with FEMA, and we'll continue to work those issues.
Mike, I understand that that will be a long process, no doubt. Will you look into unscheduled item coverage?
We do have a million dollars of inland unscheduled, and we've submitted fencing, and we're going to submit the bridges. When those bids come in, we'll submit those bridges in. So, we do have a million dollars of unscheduled inland coverage that we are submitting reimbursements for as we get the bids for repair of those items.
I know we, at the CRA meeting, we talked about that deck at Billy Joe Rish parking lot, talked about some stuff that was at Dr. Joe parking lot and such, so keep, just keep an open mind with a lot of those.
Yeah, the deck at Billy Joe Rish was covered, but I don't think the other one was covered, so I'll have to follow up on that.
So, that could probably be some unscheduled.
Okay, that's a good, yeah, to follow up on.
Yeah, make sure you include the bridge between the TDC and Maddox Park as well.
Yes, I believe all of those items are in, in the bid that, when is that bid coming in?
That would be a little different. We have out the bid now, according to small, this is going to be for Buck Brook and Lake, those small bridges there. That would be a separate one. But we are having good success when we do go out the bid. Mike has submitted those back to the insurance company, so they've come back and made us pretty much whole, haven't they?
They have.
So, that's been good as we've worked through these things.
You can see the difference in A and B on the, on the Stackhouse when we came back to them. They made us all on, on the Stackhouse, for sure.
Because some of the numbers were low initially, but then when we beat it out, we send those numbers back to them, say, hey, this is what the actual costs are, and then they're revising their numbers.
I think insurance plan is to write as small a check as possible, so I appreciate what Mike has done in holding them accountable to a fair amount that they owe the city.
And we'll continue to work those issues as they come through.
Thank you.
The next item that falls right into where we're at today, we're getting very close to finishing up with FEMA as far as making our submissions to, to the DEM, Department of Emergency Management. So, that is coming to a close. Public assistance authorization letter. We've got everything submitted. They need authorization from the board saying that, hey, Jim can submit it on behalf of the city, just submit that application, which is already there, and they just want that after that's submitted.
I was curious about that, Jim. What did, what exactly is that public assistance authorization letter?
That is, that is actually.
Compared to what we're, I know you, sir, you're on that, the board that's assisting the county with the DA.
Yeah.
Is that the same?
Not really. This, what this is, this is actually to get your public assistance through FEMA. The way, the way the process goes, it comes from the city through DEM, DEM, Department of Emergency Management. Everything goes both ways through them. When you submit all your stuff, all the portals and everything that Mike's working, they look at it, make sure everything is kosher, then they submit it on up to FEMA. When FEMA gets ready to submit a check back, it flows back through the state, back down to the local agency down from there. This guy's a consultant that works for the Department of Emergency Management. He's been tasked to help us get this application that as soon as all the portal and stuff goes through, that they can get us a check. Well, right now, the plan is we have about $600,000-something thousand that the city spent immediately with the folks that came and helped us out to put the water in the sewer back online, cover costs of employees, all the stuff within those first 45 days. So, as soon as we get this submitted on there, he's going to try to get that money immediately. Now, the other money, that's for the other 27 task orders, that you're probably looking at three to five years, to be honest with you.
I guess I don't understand, how long are we going to be in contract with this, this group?
He is a consultant for the Department of Emergency Management.
So, it's, it's solely them?
It is, it's a separate. This is not, this is not a consultant for this. He works for DEM, but he's been assigned to help the city of Port St. Joe. So, we're not paying anything. There's no contractual services directly between the city and, he's there strictly. I'd actually call, because I, when I saw the name and didn't see it, I said, I need to find out who this is. So, I called the Department of Emergency Management, and the lady in DEM said, yes, he has an office right next door. Yes, he's, he works for us. So, basically, this just says, hey, look, this allows for us to go in and submit that application in there. They want to make sure that you, as a board, agree to allow me to sign that application.
Do we need to make a motion?
Yes, it needs to be approved, yes.
So, move for a motion to accept the letter as stated.
I have a motion, this is your half number seven, Commissioner Ashbrook. Any further discussion? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries forward.
Last item I have, Mayor, is on the storm coordinated. Commissioner Ashbrook wanted to talk to you about it today.
Yes. I was contacted by Mark Smith from SDP, the gentleman that hosted the symposium that the mayor and I went to, and we'd been kind of bouncing ideas off of each other on how we can help cities get the staff that's required to, to recover from these storms, the assistance that only could come from somebody that's been through this before. Mark and I spoke, and he has created a fellowship program where he has trained people in the, in the storm recovery over prior storms since Katrina, the company's existed. And he has gone after private funding sources to pay for half of this person's salary. It would be a one-year obligation, and his original plan was to split the time between here and Mexico Beach. We've been unable to get Mexico Beach to take action at this point, so I said, submit it to us, as we would pay 50%. I don't really want to vote on this today, but I'd like you all to read the proposal, look at the breakdown. But bottom line, it comes out to about $32,000. We would get a storm coordinator that would help us go after the mitigation grants, the CDBG grants, anything that's out there and available to us, they would make sure that we don't miss the boat on anything. They would also work directly with FEMA on reporting to bring back data that we can use to track our success and what we need to be focused on, give us reports. They would work for this commission and with staff. So, I just want everyone to kind of look at that, and I could give you, I'll give Mark Smith's number to the city manager, if you all want to reach out to Mark, please do. He's got some great ideas. He's, he really wants to help us out, and they're a nonprofit. I'm sure he makes a lot of money, but it's a nonprofit, who wants to provide us with the staff person.
How much would it cost the city?
$32,000.
$32,000?
Yeah.
Unless we can get Mexico Beach to jump aboard in a week, not that in half.
Well, and that's just a flat salary that we would pay irregardless if they produce or not produce?
And it wouldn't work for us. We would contract with SDP. SDP would pay the salary, it wouldn't add another employee on our.
Well, what I'm getting at is usually a firm that is going to do this, be like a grant writer type, you know, they work on a percentage.
Sure.
So, right off the bat, I would be opposed to paying $32,000 unless we were guaranteed a result.
Well, and I encourage you to talk. He did put some of his deliverables in here. Read this, just reach out to him and talk to him if you can. He's a, he's a great guy. He knows what he's talking about. He's been doing this a long time. I'm not advocating one way or another. I mean, I think staff's doing a great job, but we all know that they're overwhelmed. So, this is an extra body, you know, that can be there to help out with whatever we need. He can do anything from write grants to search for available pots of money, and just give recommendations and keep up with FEMA with their reporting. So, you know, without any preconceived notions, all I'm asking today is please do your research, read through this, and call Mark Smith and talk to him about it. We can talk about it at a later date, and that's all I got.
All right, Mayor.
All right. John, vote it work?
Yes, sir. The only item I have on the agenda tonight is something that we've, we've looked at in years past. This is regarding fencing at 10th Street. Ball season is. Ball season is upon us, um, and there's a section, um, along the AAA field that, uh, again, in years past, we've looked at. I met with a, a company yesterday regarding, you know, the construction of a privacy fence. Uh, it would be approximately two-hundred-and-thirty feet, uh, fencing. The number I was given on the rough side is about thirty-five-hundred dollars, uh, to construct that fence. It would be along the east side of the AAA field. Um, so, there's a vegetated buffer there, and then a smaller, uh, four-foot picket fence that this would separate the folks that will be frequenting, you know, the ball field from the private homeowners.
So, it's four foot tall?
Six foot, sir.
Six foot tall?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I asked John to bring this back up. Uh, we're on baseball season now, day of baseball is this Saturday, and this is something that's been, you know, a problem, and we need to solve it. So, I am very highly in favor of putting this fence up. Uh, the neighbors over there, the Rogerses particularly, we've heard from them on several occasions where they've had people going in their yard, using the bathroom, or just throwing trash, or running through the shrubbery and stuff, and, and I think it's time that we did something over there. So, I would like this board to just consider putting this fence up immediately, and it solve a longstanding problem that we've had down at the baseball field.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Since there's ongoing litigation there, I would ask that the board allow me to reach out to litigation counsel regarding this before we take, uh, any action that may be detrimental to that litigation.
Okay, well.
Can, can I add one other thing too, Mayor? While we're doing this, can we also look at the possibility of fencing? I know the, the county has purchased that piece of property there. Can we look at the fencing as well, adding to that on the parking lot?
We, we did, yes, sir.
Is that included?
No, not in that price. It's, uh, I mean, I have a per foot cost, I just haven't brought that in front of the board yet since we're still a ways out.
I don't know if we're even closed on it yet.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Mayor, I'm comfortable letting staff make sure that we're not getting ourselves into trouble by doing it, and then we can vote on it next time.
Oh, and I, I can go along there, I'd say it's just something that's been there for a long time, and I just think it's time to close the door on it if we can.
I agree. I just don't want to open up a can of worms either. You put up a fence in one person's yard and-
This is how many length?
Two-hundred-and-thirty.
Two-thirty, now, where would that run from, particularly?
There's a, there is a vegetated buffer, call it left field, AAA down to the Eighth Street side of, of the existing four-foot fence. So, that would be your two-hundred-and-thirty foot run.
Okay. All right, well, I'm good with, we take one to the next meeting and-
Sure.
I'm good with it as well.
How about you, sir?
Yeah. The only thing I would like to add is I think it, just to be fair, we need to make sure we have an understanding who, who is in favor of the fence and who may not want the fence. Uh, you never know.
Well, I've never had one family complain to me personally. No one else has ever complained to me, so.
Just trying to solve a problem.
I have been trying to solve this problem, believe it or not. I've been there several times, but, anyway. All right, let's move on. John, is that all you had?
That's all I had.
Do you have anything for John? Uh, Larry?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything to report today unless the board asks questions.
Questions for John? Yeah, Larry? Good luck. All right. Uh, wait, sure.
Pond's healthy. The, uh, city today is adding the bacteria, the pond bugs to the pond has, um, they've up their dosage because we started having a little bit of algae pop up, which is under their contract. That's what they're supposed to do. They see it, they, and they have it, and so, right now, we're, we're pushing waters still as hard as we can. We've got two foot nine inches of the pond, so it'll start slowing down this month if nothing, if we'll get any big rains, just gonna start set it, you know, shoot water out either six or seven days a week, it's kind of what we've been doing. We'll drop to five days a week. That's all.
Yeah. Any questions for Kevin? My answer is to Tim, only Mike.
Uh, well, I'll begin working on March's financials in one update. We did receive another substantial ad valorem, uh, that gets us up to eighty percent. So, that was a nice bump for our general fund, but I will start working on March's financials and get those out this week if possible.
Any questions for Mike? See you in there.
Yes, sir. Talking about Buckriff and Lake, those bids are coming in on the twelfth, so it's your next meeting, so I have a recommendation for you on the bridges there. Uh, Eighth Street, they're gonna try to get some asphalt on it today, try to get on this afternoon, so that'll go well. And then, um, Lakeside Drive sidewalk is almost finished, almost complete, they still have to patch in the roads to do and get some form boards picked up, but, um, only it has a, a date for a grand opening.
Yes, sir. Uh, I think, uh, Mayor and I would talk briefly about trying to set up some kind of grand opening, I don't know if y'all want to have a date, if you want to do that, so, the discussion on that.
Um, I'd like to make sure, uh, Commissioner Langston can make it since his name after his father, so I'd hate to set a date today without him. Uh, I'm pretty much open anytime, and I got a few days to notice if I have anything else on my schedule I can use and work around it. I don't know about anybody else, so if y'all wanna set a date now?
I don't care as long as I check. Maybe one.
All right. We'll check with, with this, check with Commissioner Langston and see what, when a good date will be out. I wanna say I'm very happy to have those finally. Uh, I wanna thank the safety committee that I appointed during that time that we were trying to get these sidewalks approved. They did their due diligence, and I, I appreciate it, and, uh, these sidewalks are a long time coming, and they're gonna be very safe for people to walk along that road now, so I'm very happy to see it.
That was all I had, Mr. Mayor.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
No questions.
All right. Chief?
I don't have anything on the agenda, Mr. Mayor. Board has questions?
We got day of baseball Saturday, you got all that to take care of. Any questions for the chief?
I don't know.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, Curry report, you're looking, you can see it in the back of your packet. Uh, Michelle, you have anything?
Yes, sir, I do not.
Okay. Uh, at this time, we're gonna get you the citizens in the audience, of course, as everyone know, we have the three-minute rule. You can get a, uh, motion and a second, you can talk a little more. And I see one hand straight by there. Come on up. Uh, please sign in for me.
Lorinda Gensher with the Gulf County Chamber of Commerce, I wanted to thank, um, the staff, Jimmy Anderson, chief, and his crew, and, um, John Grantland and their crew for all the assistance they gave us at the Blues in the Watt Music Festival. It went off great, no problems, and we really appreciate all the assistance to make it run smoothly.
Do you think they had more of this year than last year?
Yeah.
It was bigger?
Yeah, and, um, every business that we talked to along Reed Avenue was thrilled with, um, all the increased business, which of course was the reason we put it on Reed Avenue to start with.
Right.
So, um, it went very well. No incidents that we have heard about from anybody, so.
Good, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was a beautiful day and a great turnout, I thought.
Yeah, good, good. Uh, anyone else? Any of y'all that just wanna speak? Do I see a hand?
Yes.
Over there?
Yep.
Come on up. State your name, please, and-
Christie McRoy, Woodward Avenue. Um, I'm glad you guys are working on an ordinance for, uh, future candidates. I'm very sad that that wasn't done before. You gave yourselves those, that big raise, three commissioners that sit on this board, this was one of the things that I talked about. So, that fee went from one-hundred-and-fifty dollars roughly to over five-hundred dollars. After a storm, that's very difficult to, uh, for some people to absorb. And if I'm voted as mayor, I will not take that high salary that, uh, other commissioners are taking in their pay. Uh, I'll take about half or whatever seems fair. That's what a lot of people that talked about this talked about. Uh, city workers should be the ones that we try to fairly compensate. Um, we're supposed to be public servants. Our demographics are quite important for the way that we budget and how we plan to spend our dollars. For ages zero to seventeen, our county has two-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-one children. For ages sixty-four and over, two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-six people. For ages between forty-five and sixty-four, there's four-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-four people. Anytime we think it's a good idea to spend large sums of taxpayer hard-earned cash, we need to look at the big financial picture and the numbers of people it will help to improve their lives and make rational decisions from that information. As one voter said to me, I don't mind paying my taxes, I do mind how you spend my dollars if I'm on a fixed income. Every dollar I pay in taxes is one less I have for fish bait, and everyone has a fish bait story. Our county, for our county, our poverty rate is twenty-three-point-five percent, whereas the state is fourteen-point-nine-eight percent. We need leaders in the city that walk side by side with folks. We need leaders that lead. Piggyback onto others with no vested interest in our city isn't being a good leader. I'm Christie McRoy, and if a vote for me is a vote for everyone in Port St. Jeff, and I'm gonna stand by my word about that salary. Thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Come on up. Robert Branch, ten-sixteen Morgan Avenue. Y'all just spoke on litigation of the fence, proposed fence put up on the east side of AAA field. Is, uh, that pretty much covering one end to the other, but no, everybody, if you put it up, everybody has to have it, or some people have to have it, or people have wanted, or what?
Mayor, I'm gonna ask that the board not address this until I have a further update. There's pending litigation revolving around the Tenth Street ballpark.
It was, it was brought up, the reason I'm bringing it up. Had it not been brought up, I would, I wouldn't even wrote it down, but if you don't, if you don't know, you don't know. That's the reason I brought it up, and I appreciate what you said. Uh, on March twenty-second, the county purchased two lots on the corner of Tenth and Morgan. We're all aware of that, right? Uh, purchased with TDC money?
I believe that's right.
For the purpose of what? What's the, what was the purpose of the purchase? Could y'all tell me?
I was told it was for a parking lot.
Parking lot, what?
For a ballpark, that's there currently.
For the Tenth Street ballpark. That's always been residential as long as anybody can remember. So, is there gonna be any litigation or so-called on that, or are we just gonna just throw it in and expect all the neighbors to, to live with that too? Put, put a fence up maybe there? Or could y'all, would y'all like to comment on that?
There's been no action taken by the city, sir. The county purchased that land. You're asking us what we think that that's gonna be for, and I told you what I thought. I can't tell you anything else other than what's already happened.
I appreciate that, so maybe we're looking at more fences there. Okay. At the same time that was done, the tax base was took out of the city, like it was spoken before, we need all the help we can get. That was took out, and at the same time, all this takes place, guess what? Y'all back to devaluing, y'all were back to devaluing our neighborhood, the property we've owned all our life. Would y'all like to comment on that?
I don't believe we can, that was one of the arguments in the suit.
Okay, appreciate that. One more thing, the agreement was made by Mr. Langston to go back to have the meetings at twelve o'clock for the park with him coaching basketball, is that correct? Where is Mr. Langston today? Here at Devon and his family. I'm sorry to hear that. Oh, we've been- Mr. Billy Quinn, you know, Mr. Billy Quinn? Uh, good person, know him well. That's his uncle. Good person, know him, know him well, good man. Are we, are we going back to six o'clock? Or, or more of the public to be here? Have y'all talked about that? Yes, sir, we, we have a discussion of it. Are we gonna, we gonna talk about that today? I don't think it's on the agenda today. The reason I say that, I actually ran into Mr. Langston three days ago at Piggy Wiggly, and he said he would be here, but I guess the dad kept him from there, and y'all was gonna vote on it today to go back for the next two weeks. That's what he actually told me. But can y'all vote on it without him here? Y'all already, y'all already know what you wanna do anyway, right? No, no, uh, there's been some discussion of maybe having one meeting at six o'clock in the afternoon and one meeting at twelve. What would be the purpose of that? Just the way to do it. Whether, I mean, y'all, y'all work for the, y'all work for the public, which I say, I mean, I have to take off from work just to be here at this time of the day. Had it been six, I'd only have to take off two hours, I'd take two, the, the whole day off.
Well, there are some people, though, that actually came to me and said that they supported the idea of having a, a meeting at lunchtime and then offering a meeting in the evening. And then you, because there's people that work shifts, so if you have somebody that's assigned to a shift that can't ever come at twelve, but can only come at six, you also have people like you well know that are working the evening shift from three to eleven or three to midnight, so they can't ever come to the late meeting, but they can come to the twelve o'clock meeting.
Actually, speaking of myself, I work eight, eight in the morning, eight at night. So, if I'm actually working that day, I mean, I'm, I'm stuck, I'm at, you know, on play.
Yeah, but if you run, you, you-
But I can take off, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I'm on the late shift, but I can take off a couple hours, get off early, and I'm gonna have to take off the whole day. I'm gonna have to have someone give a motion for you to continue. We've got only three minutes. That's fine, that's all I have to say.
I'll do that.
That's, uh- You can't do that, it's coming to board. It has to be a motion and a second. The, the reason I brought the, the, uh, the time up here is, 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 let me make sure I get this right. Did y'all vote on that to go to twelve? Did y'all, did y'all vote as a board to go to twelve, or was that just because he had, uh, was coaching basketball? We voted. I'm pretty sure we did. To go to twelve because he was coaching basketball, not because everybody, it didn't work to schedule, it was for his schedule. That's my understanding, I just wanna clear that up.
That is correct.
Okay, that's all over, then? Appreciate your time. Yes, sir, thank you. Anyone else? Come on up. Uh, please sign in for me, sir. State your name, address.
I live in one-on-one Liberty Manor Circle. Uh, I have property on Avenue A, I'm not gonna talk about the property, but I was over there a day or so ago, and I saw something that could be taken as an issue. There was a speeding car come down, going that way, I was, I say we walked away, and There was a speeding car come down going that way, or I say we walk way, and he ran off the road. If you know from Avenue A, there's a little S in that road there before you get to Mr. Gant. I think it should be noticed that there should put a little bit more specific ways of police enforcement, because it's getting to similar time, young girls walk, kids, people with bicycles. I don't have insurance, old man growing, my unpaid child support payments over with. I got hit by a car years ago after I got off of work, at basic chemical. I'm having problems with my back now. But what I'm saying is, it's not a good thing a speeding car to come down, and construction trucks does it, too. Just the other day, a girl had a tire rotty in the brake. It hit the ditch in front of the house, but if anybody would have been there, the car could have hit them.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public? Anyone else? All right, no one else. Commissioner Ashbrook, what's stopping you?
Just a couple of short things, Mayor. Jim, the public restroom's there, the public restroom's there at City Hall. I was in there the other day, and it seems like all the metal in that is just rusting out. Is that something that's the cleaning products, or is that something that we just haven't replaced in a while? And what would it take to fix that up a little bit?
Yes, sir, I think it's the cleaning products that's being utilized on there. I think there's been a lot of Clorox, but it's not very old, but just a particular...
Okay, yeah, we can do that. Next thing, too, TDC approached me, actually one of the members of the TDC, and said they had some complaints from tourists that were walking along the beach there, on the walking trail. They said it's just still covered in debris. I didn't know, I know we've been focusing on the parks, the ballparks, but are we, what's the plan for the rest of the areas?
Me and Mr. Grantland are trying to get a plan together. I believe the Easter egg hunt is two weeks from Saturday. It's not going to be perfect by no means, it was quite the mess, but yes, sir, we're going to, we're going to keep working and working and working until we get it back to the way it is.
All right, hold on, thank you.
Yes, sir.
The only thing I had, I noticed, I've noticed there's vegetative debris on the right of ways again, and I know the cleanup, the pickups passed, but you got people expecting the city to pick it up, you know? And I know, last I heard, I know we don't even, we don't have the staff to do it.
We are going to, we are working an interim plan, Commissioner Lowery. We are going to get somebody back out there until we get with a new contractor to pick it up, so. It's not going to be as good and as fast as the, you know, with the 20 trucks going, but just Mr. Grantland is going to get back after picking up. Biggest thing is we've got to get people to understand the refrigerators, the large chunks of metal, all that stuff. People need to carry that stuff off, but yes, we're going to get back to the standard piles of yard debris that we worked for until our new contractor.
Right, okay.
We had that conversation with our new contractor this morning, too, BCC, trying to work through their details. Right now, preliminary of the plan is to, for a once-a-week pickup for the yard debris. We're working through the details.
That's all I have, Commissioner Hoffman?
I've got a couple of things. First item is Centennial Building, heard me talk about that as far as the insurance, but I think we need to have that building inspected as far as mold, and I know that our high school used it for prom night, and I had people telling me that when they were in there setting up for prom and getting used, getting ready to use the building, that the smell was really strong. So it made me think we probably should have that inspected for mold, or just, we need to ensure that it's safe before we continue to rent that building out, so.
We probably can get the insurance company to do, to bring a...
We can contact them about that, yeah.
Probably a private group to come in and do that for us.
We had lots of lawyers pouring into that thing for days and days, so I just want to have that looked at now, so when we rent it, we can rent it with assurance that it's not a hazard. The other thing is, have we heard any response to what we advertised for the grant writer position?
No, sir, we did not get a single application in on it, so if you want to, we can go ahead and put it back out for ads. We probably need to look at and see if we need to make any changes to it on there, if there's any... What we probably need to do is take a look at this thing, this all talked this week, give me a call, take a look at it. I'll put a copy, I'll send you a copy of what we sent before. If you have any suggestions, we'll get it back out again and see if we can hit a different angle or a different group of people that may or may not be interested in it, because, no, sir, we didn't get any response.
We sent it to local paper, Panama City and where else?
On the website, that was three places we did.
Yeah, I think I would be more comfortable with sending it to larger areas based on the fact that a grant writer could actually do this job from home, so they don't necessarily have to be local. I would love to hire a local person, but we need the grant writer, so I'm not willing to give up on that just yet. So I think we need to cover the larger cities in the state of Florida would be our next step.
We can possibly put on the League of Cities website, too. They advertise for different positions within municipalities and counties, so we can do that, so we'll get that out to you. Michelle, if you could send that to all of them to take a look at it, we will get it back out, and we'll even see how much it is to run it, maybe like in the town.
Democrat, yeah. Okay, yeah, that'd be good. The last item is, earlier we had a meeting with the CRA group, and Bill Kennedy expressed the need for, he needs some, some help, he needs a work crew, and I know, John, your, your people are strapped, but we discussed the fact that the county had employed those 20 positions, if you'll recall. Would you check and find out if those, check with Mr. McKnight, find out, are those people still employed and helping with the county? And if so, remind him that we were promised three positions that we never received as far as I was told. But we need to see if we can get maybe Billy Trailer's crew, if those people are available to help with some of these areas, like you just mentioned, the walking track down there at Core Park. We've mentioned the parking lot, they're off of 98, need some help. We just need some bodies that are willing to do some cleanup type work, manual labor, and we, we thought about that as being an option, so if you check and see if we can get some people for that. That's all I have, Mayor.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out today, and I ask for a motion to adjourn.